Thank you for coming. I would like to welcome our new CPS principals, Principal Julie Lamoli. Thank you for coming to the antutine and welcome. Do we have any comments from the public tonight? No comments. So we will move on to presentations of issues of interest to the committee. Martin, would you like to come?
For the year end donations.
That's all right. Hi.
Good evening. It's a yearly presentation that we do and as you will see this year was another year that we had generous contributions from the community, from organizations and individuals and businesses on the island. Over the past years, we've gotten in total $650,000 which have helped numerous programs and initiatives within the school. And just it is another opportunity to just, I know the sheet is very dense with numbers, but it's just an opportunity to just say thank you one more time. We appreciate the support and it's essential for the school what we get is from the community. This is what we have as of today.
And you have, on the back you have last year's.
Last year's, yes. So last year's was a little over $193,000, this year is a little over $206,000 and in 2017, over $249,000. So in three years, around $650,000.
That's incredible.
That's awesome.
We are so fortunate to live in this community. Our students are so fortunate. Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Martin? No?
No, just so this is a great, I mean a great list that I think many communities would love to have. And I think it just shows that our community's support and belief in our education in our district. And I think that we're very fortunate, I mean 206,000 and as you said, last year's just under 200,000 in donations is outstanding.
Martin, this does not include money that goes to the athletic department for scholarships, does it?
No, no, it does not. These are just gifts given for specific initiatives, a lot of them for the community school as well.
Yeah, but there are donations for the scholarships.
They are, they're separate. They're not included in this, in this list.
So there's even more money that comes to the, to the students.
That's amazing. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Martin. All right, before we move on to the evaluation update, I would like to welcome Beth, our deputy superintendent, to the table. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here with us tonight.
Okay, we have started several years ago to report on evaluations. Some of you who have been on the school committee the longest will remember that this was a grave concern back in 2010 because there were a lot of evaluations that weren't taking place at all. And so we have reported on the teacher evaluation and I've also provided you the administrators' evaluations, a spreadsheet on both of those. What I've done is sort of with the help, I should say, of Joanne Johnson and Mike Horton, I don't want to leave them out, they're not here, but they helped pull this together. By school, you can see the numbers in each category, proficient, exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, unsatisfactory or not evaluated. You can, on the right-hand column, you can see the standards that are being addressed. But I did not include a breakout of the ratings for each indicator. But there are, you know, three to six indicators for each of those standards. I just gave you the overall. So it just gives you an idea of the profile with respect to evaluation, predominantly in the proficient area. And that is, as was designed by the Department of Education as they rolled this evaluation system out. I don't know if you have particular questions. I think the not evaluated, I think one of those was probably the school resource officer. And then I'm not sure who the other was, although Mike told me, but it's not somebody that we would consider a teacher.
Well, we have two school resource officers.
It could have been the two, but I somehow thought it was Cassie and one other, but I'm not sure. You can?
Yeah. It's Donna Kessler.
Ah, November.
And so she left in November, so she would have only received a summative at the end of the year, not to mention any of you did regular observations, but her, this is a reflection of the colmatev. Colmatev, I'll be all right. So she left mid-November, so we didn't do a formative or summative from Donna.
Thank you for fielding that. No, I appreciate it. And then under the administrators' evaluations, I've done the same thing. The four different standards, they're slightly different, but certainly parallel with the standards for teachers. And the rating system is the same. I have two columns, just to explain. The column under WMC are the eight people that I evaluate, which is the four principals and then some department heads like ELL and Special Education and the two curriculum people. The other column under other is, includes assistant principals, the literacy coordinator and the assistant special education coordinator. So I just wanted to show you that there's a difference in, in who evaluates. And then I also noted at the bottom that I evaluate the director of facilities, director of technology, finance, community school director and the athletic director using a system that is not provided through DESI. So a lot of work goes into that evaluation. Sometimes I, I don't like sharing this because it doesn't do justice to what the administrators are doing in evaluation and the, how time-consuming and the amount of detail that they put into their evaluations of faculty. So certainly appreciate all of your work.
Through the chair, may I ask a question? Can you give an outline of what the procedure would be for someone that scoring needs improvement or unsatisfactory, what the follow-up is or support for your admin and also for your teachers, our teachers?
So I could give you a, the whole rubric and the whole system of evaluation, but it would probably put you to sleep at night. When an administrator does an observation, and they will do many observations that will lead to a formative evaluation of their faculty and then a summative. And there are different categories of teachers. There's a brand-new teacher, developing teacher, and then those that have already achieved professional teacher status who are in a different track. And then there are educators who may be on a directed growth plan. And so that would be one of the first steps for the administrators to take with a teacher who is not meeting that proficiency level. They might have them go on to a directed growth plan with very specific goals for improvement in the categories. The first two standards are standards, if you look at that, the one in curriculum and the one in instruction, teaching all kids and teaching all students, are categories that you must be proficient in. And if you are, needs improvement in one of those two, you automatically go to a directed growth plan. I'm trying to hit the highlights if anybody wants to jump in and add value to that. And there are discussions, you know, when you do an evaluation and have, you have a conversation with the teachers afterwards as you go through it. Sometimes you will ask clarifying questions. I didn't see this. It doesn't mean that you don't do it. Can you tell me how you, tell me more about how you use assessment in your classroom? So there's always, there's usually a good dialogue where you will get more information and informs, and those take place oftentimes after the observations. And then you take, you collect your observations to make your formative, or your observations to make your summative.
Is it appropriate at that time, or does that come at another time, that a teacher might be paired with a mentor so that they, if there was an area that they were not able to reach proficiency in?
Great, great question. Initially, all new teachers will have mentors. But this coming year, we do have two teachers that will have mentors who are not new but struggling in one area or another. And so we will be looking for mentors, well, where, what school they're in really doesn't matter, but we have gone to that model. It's hard for a small district because we run out of mentors. And it's also hard because we have to train them to be mentors. So sometimes, and especially more so in the last four years as we've had more turnover, when, when we're looking at, what, 25 or 30 new faculty members, we are hard-pressed to come up with mentors. And of course, you want the right people mentoring them. And if I may, I see somebody in the audience, I can speak about Kim Albertson, mentored two people. So, you know, we go to that well when we have to. You first want somebody, ideally, you want somebody in the same grade level. So if they're a fourth-grade teacher, you'd like to know another fourth-grade teacher who can mentor them. Or if they're a preschool teacher, you'd like to have another. But when, when Jody Newman left and Kim was the only preschool teacher and we had lots of new preschool teachers, do you go, you have to make a decision as a principal, do we go outside the area that they teach in? Similar in a high school. It may be that in some cases, John has used an English teacher to mentor an ELL teacher. And because you don't have any, you know, enough teachers in a, in a particular area. So you do have to cross. We've done the same thing at the middle school sometimes when we didn't have, you know, and it's even harder when you have a new, say librarian, because there's not another librarian in that school. So you have to go maybe to another school. And I know that Mrs. McKeever did a mentorship for a, the middle school chorus teacher. So sometimes you have to go outside because the discipline is more important than the, and sometimes the grade level is more important for them to be mentored by.
Is it ever possible to, maybe you do assign like certain areas of professional development, like so that if there's an area recognized or identified that they could receive something online or go to another school and see? I'm just trying to think because we're only so many people in the district, so.
The principals will recommend in their, in the plan for a, either a developing educator. I know in a couple cases this year, Kim used a very prescriptive program for a couple of teachers that were struggling. And so you use, you might use online, you might send, give them a book that's a great resource, you might have them do classroom visits of professionals who are exemplary in, in certain areas. I think, you know, we use every possibility at our disposal to help.
Great, thank you. Thank you for going through that.
Yep, yep. And then for administrators, I will do an evaluation of the administrator and then we will have a conversation. And it's a draft. We'll have a conversation, talk about it. Sometimes they will say, but you didn't know this. Or sometimes in the evaluation, I'll pose a question. I'll say, I didn't see what you're doing for cultural proficiency. And I try to add the caveat, doesn't mean that nothing's happening, but I didn't see it, so help me understand what I may have missed. Because, you know, when you do an evaluation once a year, the summative at the end of the year for administrators, it's based on observations and accumulation of observations throughout the year. I might go to their coffee. I'm, I'm, I might make a note from a coffee of something that I saw, or I will read their school improvement plan, or I will go to a faculty meeting and I'm listening to the conversation, but I'm also evaluating, I've gone to, you know, the ILT meetings or just any number of things, you're sort of taking it all in. But in my opinion, the write-up is always a draft until you've had a conversation. Sometimes I've gone back and changed it based on the conversation, and sometimes I haven't. Sometimes I would say, I understand how you feel, but I'm, you know, my comments stand. And then, you know, so it's a, it's a give and take process and you want to help them progress as leaders. And I would say the same thing in their evaluation, the principals' evaluations of assistant principals. They're giving them feedback on how to improve their craft.
Great, thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments about the evaluations? No? Okay, moving on to committee discussion and votes to take. We have a vote to approve the donation from A-hole, financial, AKA Stop &amp; Shop to CPS in the amount of $1,710.22.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a vote to approve the June 18th, 2019 meeting minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a vote to approve the June 25th, 2019 workshop retreat session meeting minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to approve transfers and invoices?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report?
Well, you have an enrollment in the back of your package. This is a projected enrollment, don't fall in love with it. In July, it always changes. I've highlighted the two areas that may change the most. That is kindergarten. I can almost assure you that we will have more than 100 kindergarteners when we open up on the first day. But that, that number changes throughout the next two months. And the other number that sometimes changes, or more often changes, would be the ninth grade number as students from the private schools come in and we try to figure out where that's going to be. Right now, you'll see that number, the overall number is slightly down from June 1st, 1678 to 1692. Quite honestly, that means nothing at this point. So we'll be back to you in August and it'll be interesting to see how it, how it looks at that point. Hiring update. We're still moving forward with the elementary school, I think that Kim just informed me that she had an acceptance, so we have filled a kindergarten in a first-grade position since we met last. And I think two strong candidates coming in. We have another candidate for me to meet this week and somebody that you met today that you're excited about. So if you're listening, it might be you.
It was only on the first grade, so maybe you don't watch.
Okay, sorry about that. So we're still looking for kindergarten and wrapping up that first grade. We had, I think I had reported last time that a social worker candidate that was coming has backed out. So that is a position that we're looking as well as the options program at the elementary school. At the intermediate school, still trying to tie down the media specialist and an ESL, either ESL teacher or an SEI coach, depending on what we find. Oh, excuse me, the assistant principal at the elementary school is still working on that. CPS, we are with Julie on board now. We're looking at Chinese is one and there are some candidates. Jamie had started that search and so we're, we're hoping that we can make some progress there. The dean of students is still something that Julie and Beth and I need to talk about and Jamie, and which way, which direction to go, but I know that Julie will be talking to some candidates. We did hire a special education teacher that we're excited about for the middle school and, and we've hired an eighth-grade math teacher since we last spoke. So those are two important pieces and we had already hired a music teacher and physical education teacher and a social worker. So moving along at the high school, since we last spoke, John has hired a math teacher. So we filled that. Still looking in science. That's a tough area to find qualified, the pool is pretty shallow. I had mentioned to you that we had guidance counselor said, and still looking for landscaping. And John has been interviewing candidates for the nurse position because Jessica Douglas is, is going back to the hospital. So we're looking there and there. I think there were at least three candidates that I know John, local candidates that John was speaking with.
Can I just ask to, Jen? So will you plan to have that candidate also teach the allied health? Okay, so become part of that position now?
Yeah, that is though. And then we have a speech therapist we're excited about and a BCBA and we're looking for a bilingual support staff member. We really need to find somebody experienced in translation and interpretation and primarily Spanish, but also the population, the Portuguese population. And that's another area that we could, we could use some of. So it's, it's coming along. I don't think we're in panic mode. It's still, you know, early July. The panic will set in and, and the end of July is, if, if things are still open at that time. And then I provided for you the professional teacher status list. Nothing that you have to act on, but that was information that you asked about in the past few years. So these are teachers who have received their fourth contract. And actually, we missed Grace Tornalish who I think was a year ago, so I added her to the list. But these teachers have received professional teacher status. And then with the chair's permission, I thought you might want to hear an update from Beth about her first week and some of the ground that she has covered.
Sure.
Love to. May I ask you that? So I have received such a very warm welcome from everyone at central office, colleagues, school principals, assistant principals. It's really just helped in kind of getting comfortable with the district settling in, getting the lay of the land. Mr. Cozart has been fantastic in getting me up to speed on some of the historical aspects and decisions that have been made of this, in the school system, as well as our district priorities, staffing, professional development, and planning for our administrative and leadership team meetings, which will be starting next week. I've participated alongside Mike for facilities and technology updates, hiring meetings, a meeting with Head Start, NES and the community schools. So it's been really good to get in and not only just to listen and observe, but also to feel participatory, which has been really important. I have had a chance to meet with Kelly Cooney. We hadn't met before when I was here earlier in the month, in June, to, to talk about the English learner program and some of the areas that she's working on and will be working on next year and some of her ideas about hiring curriculum. And so that was very helpful to, to be able to do that. I had the opportunity to sit in on an interview and a model lesson that was being taught by an elementary school teaching candidate, and I'm very happy to, to hear that she's accepted, that's wonderful. And, you know, I had a really great opportunity to do an extensive facilities walkthrough with Diane O'Neill of each building and the grounds. And that was really helpful to me and, and I'm so impressed with her and her staff, the head custodians were so welcoming and so detail-oriented in what they were really proud of in their buildings. And that to me just represents a great team effort in making sure that the grounds and the buildings are up to, up to snuff in all aspects. So that was really great. I've had the opportunity, partially in the sense of proximity, with, with Mike Horton to have very rich conversations around curriculum, assessment and mentoring, and also summer school. It turns out that we're currently sharing an office, so it's great to have him right next to me and, and a lot of good conversation is going on, which is really, really great. I really look forward to collaborating with him and with the, with the principals as well on a number of projects. We, as Mike mentioned earlier, we welcomed Julie Lamoli, the new principal of the middle school, and had a great conversation with her and, and Jamie around the areas of focus that they'll be working on with, for CPS. And in looking forward, this coming week, I've set up, this week, currently, I've set up informational meetings with each principal and assistant principal to discuss some data and assessment in each of their sites, giving me as much information as I can gather directly from those who work right in the trenches alongside their teachers to understand what they see in data and assessment. So that's a good start, I feel, for this, for this week. It's felt like, it's been weeks that I've been here and I feel right at home and it's, it's really been a wonderful start. So thank you to all of you for making it so, so comfortable and easy to slide right into this position. Thank you. Especially to Mike who's been really very welcoming and very guiding throughout the, throughout the week, so.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Sounds like you've been very busy.
Delighted.
What's Mike doing when you're doing all this work?
That's our secret.
You know I'm joking. All right, any subcommittee work? Anything happening in the subcommittee world? No, not within the last committee?
Anything to report, Mike, on that, as I missed the last meeting?
Oh, boy. No, I think we have already reported out on the sophomore. No, I think we have already reported out on the sophomores.
Sophomore, yeah.
Yep, yep. Perfect. Great, then we will look to our new student council representative. Welcome, Joel. Thank you for being here.
Welcome, Joel.
Thank you so much. Do you have anything to share with us or to report?
Nothing really. I'm just looking forward to a good year, senior year is my last year at the high school, so it's just gone so fast. Everyone's been telling me, "Just enjoy it, because it's going really fast," but I was like, "It's not going to go that fast."
Well, thank you so much for being here with us.
No worries.
Have you here. All right, the agenda for next meeting?
Well, the advanced placement results have come in, so John will be reporting on those, and I won't tip his, tip the hand on there. Fourth quarter budget update from Martin, and he'll give the food service along with that, as he usually does. We do have a, we'll have a recommendation on the food service prices. And I don't think that the, I'm not sure, I think the student accounts might wait until the second August meeting and also the goals, because Beth and I want to share some thoughts with you on your district goals and superintendent goals follow the district goals.
Thank you.
On the horizon, it mentions a student handbook. So, I was wondering if maybe the policy, policy subcommittee could meet and just do a once-over before you do that?
Sure. I'll.
Just thinking about that. That's a lot to do.
I'll do that. The only, the only thing that I would add to that is with Julie coming on new, I think she's going to want to take more time, or will need to take more time, to look at that, and they have some definite ideas about what they might want to add in the way of student conduct. So, that may, that may not come as quickly as perhaps John and Kim's and Eve Marie's. I think we did that the same way Eve Marie's first year, you know, when you're, when you're first looking at it, it deserves a little bit more attention.
Sure, understood.
Yep.
So, are you wanting to meet before we get the handbooks or after? I'm not sure.
Well, you know where I'm going.
Right.
I just want to.
We'll pass them on, I will pass them on to the policy committee as soon as I get them.
Before they go out to students, before we approve them for students?
That will be before approval.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
I have a question too on the horizon, and Tracy's here tonight, but community school, September 3rd, we've got them pegged for. I don't know what you were planning on having them report. I know sometimes Tracy's done like her year in numbers or her summer camp, but I think it might be nice if we also maybe not just have a numbers report, but could we get Tracy to do a full report on what the community school is and the programming that they offer? I think it would be a good benefit to Beth and to Julie, certainly, just to sort of get a bigger picture of the community school, if Tracy could do that? Maybe some of their innovative programs that they have and how they interact with the schools?
We certainly can. My, the only reason I'm hedging is that the summer program report is, incorporates all of our school programs, ELL, special education, and Title I, in addition to the ACT Venture and all of the camps for community school.
Oh, because Michelle's going to do the special ed, you mean? She's going to do it?
No.
No, Tracy's going to do those numbers?
No, I think Mike Horton has traditionally reported the summer program numbers.
Okay.
So.
And Andrea Marr usually comes.
Yep.
So, I'm just suggesting, maybe we, I mean, the numbers are great, we can have that down on a report, but I think having a narrative or a discussion, some sort of discussion, or maybe Tracy can just add it to her papers, but I just think it's important and a good reminder for all of us, too.
A good reminder for us, yeah.
Yeah, because I don't know whether we'd have her come back. I think, haven't, haven't we kind of had this now, that the only other time she'd come back is for the budget? So, if this is, if we feel like this is a good time to have community school?
I guess I'm not understanding what you're looking for, because she's listed on there.
I know, but traditionally, it's a numbers thing on summer boost and the ACT Venture camp, which I think it's great to know numbers are up or down. I want a bigger picture of like, what are the programs that they're doing during the year?
We certainly can do that. I think I would have to ask her whether that would be a September 17th instead of a September 3rd.
Okay.
Make it two separate presentations, maybe?
Or make it a later one, because she might need to get some information. Okay, I'll leave that to you, but I just think that would be great to include a more comprehensive look at the school.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming.